I'll call over the Finance Committee meeting for Tuesday, November 18th at six o'clock. Let the record show that all aldermen are present. Okay, approval of the minutes from the previous committee meeting, which was Tuesday, November 4th. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Anastasia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have a number of things to go over today and we're gonna start with, under unfinished business, the splash park update. So...
Before we start, Joe, can you move your mic away from that? Because we're wondering now if that's what that was last, last time we had to go right now too.
Yeah.
Can you hear us? That might get off.
Yeah. Okay. That works. Okay, James, you had sent us something. Is there, do you want to do, kind of go over anything you sent us or?
Uh, well, actually, we have Brandon Riggs from CPL on the Zoom call, who's the project manager, who's been overseeing the project for us. So Brandon had prepared a much more detailed update than I had that did not get distributed to the council yet.
Okay.
So maybe Brandon, if you start, and I think key questions are gonna be where we are financially and what's the path, path to completion, which I know is one of the things specifically you wrote up in this update.
Yeah, no problem. Something just general rundown right now. The budget sits pretty much exactly where it was when it was bid. So the bid value, when it was awarded, was $449,009.99 and 25 cents. Uh, we've approved about $40,000 in change orders, but kind of front loaded some of the approvals so that we could use field change payment. Uh, we've used about $20,000 of the $50,000, which is included into the $450,000 that was initially awarded. So overall, right now, if we use the full field change allowance, we're looking at about $490,000 total to be paid. And I don't know if the council is aware, but our engineers estimate back in 2024, when we awarded the job, was a 1.25 million. That didn't include the change order, or it didn't include the $50,000 field change allowance. And the next highest bid was around 2.6 million. So I just wanna stress the fact that this project has been a significant savings for the taxpayer and community, even given that it has extended assets, plan completion date. Now, when it comes to the completion date of the project, they're about 90% finished right now. Um, I'm sure you guys have driven by and heard multiple things from residents in your areas. Right now, today, they should have been installing the rest of the posts, defense posts. They let me know that on the 21st, they plan on pouring the rest of the stamped concrete pad and then they will plan on finishing the concrete, the splash pad concrete on November 24th. So as long as weather works well for, for the concrete pour, those should be wrapped up by then. And then the, the, the remaining exterior work should be wrapped up before Christmas. So the site should have all equipment removed, all work equipment removed before Christmas and before the new year. The next big task on the list would be Department of Health approval, which we would have to wait until the weather allows us to turn the system on. So we would have to be after, we see probably consistent 40 and 50 degree days. So typically, that would probably be around middle of March to late March. So we'll give the Department of Health schedule to go out there to complete the review. Typically, it takes about one to two months to complete any issues that the Department of Health finds with the treatment system. Now, I will say that our contractor, there's a reason that he was able to bid solo on the projects. For the most part, the city is giving a very good deal with what we've paid so far, even given the issues that we've experienced. But I wanna point out too that when we do the Department of Health review, even experienced contractors do see one to two months of time to correct all the issues, given that this is another contractor that doesn't have a lot of experience in this area. I will say that I would hope that it takes one to two months and then we would expect the opening to be allowed on Memorial Day, just like it was planned for last year. So that's the basic rundown on, on this project. If the council has any questions for me, I would be happy to answer them.
So I have a question. You said there were $40,000 in change order. Was that one change order?
No, we have five total.
Total. So none over $25,000?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
So there were no separate change orders that were above $25,000?
No, no, they were, they were approved in smaller increments.
Okay. Questions? Anyone else?
Okay. Well, thank you guys for allowing me to call in. I do appreciate it. If you have any other questions, feel free to let me know. And Jim, if you wouldn't mind distributing my summary for everyone, I would appreciate it.
I'm sure that, yeah, this gets through to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, East State Street, it came before us. There was a, a change order. We had asked for some clarification. James had sent it out to us. While I think we have some cleanup of our change orders and such that, um, fifty-eight thousand?
I think it's fifty-eight, you know?
Fifty-eight changes.
Yeah. So we're looking to put that on the, any other questions about it? Okay, Alderman, then?
Yeah, so clearly I'll support paying the change order. The contractor did the work. What needs to be discussed is how the change order got to where it is. That's listed as a single change order and a total of $58,000. And the change order policy clearly states that anything over $25,000 has council approval. It also states that I believe on that single change order, Jim, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I believe that said change order number four on that, top of that heading, if I remember correctly?
I think it is change order four.
Okay. Um, and then Brandon just said that there was five total change orders on this splash pad project. Well, none of them went over the total of $25,000 required council approval. I believe it's $10,000 his department had, up to 25 his mayoral approval, plus he can extend beyond 15 days. But every single one of them are supposed to be put on the Finance Committee immediately following that to then be discussed. I don't know what you highlighted, the change order things. So, and none of them have been put on there, and then clearly this one hasn't. And this isn't the first time that something along these lines has happened regarding procurement policy. I remember last year, we discussed, was there an appetite for having a contractor come in here and put up lights? Then a contractor was hired $27,000, which should have been a competitive bid. Prior to that, we purchased five cars that when we did a verbal approval, it was a state bid locked in price that was gonna be it. Then once the cars were ready to be delivered, the council had to pony up, I think, 75 more thousand dollars. But at no point did anybody ever come back. My concern, as I brought this up before, is this is just another breach of the procurement policy that has become habitual. And while there may be a change in the mayoral's office soon, I am gonna like work with Alderman to call to try to find some things to maybe even say that not just signed off on by the mayor of the department head, but perhaps also the Finance Committee Chair and the Council President. So that way, we know that we're seeing these things in a timely fashion. Because that's where spending gets out of control. We talked about nickel and diming, but that's $58,000. And Joe, I know, because I'm not, certainly not talking to you about this, but in your thing, you also talked about, uh, in your clarification, you said, uh, City Electrician Dave Kane and Ben Slotman approved. Well, Dave Kane, and where was approval? Dave Kane can approve. Dave Kane is a division manager. It also says it needs department head approval, for which he's not. So looking to just clear up some stuffs, that way this stuff doesn't happen again. And I will still vote to support to pay the $58,000 they were hired. Not really looking to get the city into another lawsuit over, over that.
Any other comments on that? I think that one of the things that we're mindful of is that aggregate total of change orders too, that can become an issue, right? That not just, you know, we can see multiple smaller ones that extend well beyond a, a $25,000 if, if it was chosen to do it that way. So I think just in terms of cleaning things up and, um, not going by past precedent and what we've done, where we need to make some changes and clean up our own internal process with some things that, that will certainly work together and work with our city attorney to come up with some drafted changes to get back to you guys to ensure that we are, one, following our own policies and procedures, if you will, but also looking to ensure that we don't have similar instances down the road. Any other thoughts?
No, I agree with everything Jer said. He helped completely explain it well. So I agree with everything you said there. It's not all well paid.
And I would say I always appreciate James, everything you put together so that we have a clear understanding coming in, what, what we have. So thank you for that. So we need to get this on to, uh, put it to, to pay?
There will be a resolution on next week's agenda. Because there is a timing issue, we wanted to ensure tonight that all questions were answered. So if there are any additional questions, we had them handled before the resolution on Tuesday.
I think we're good, I think?
And that also is part of the resolution, is where it's coming from?
Yes.
It's, there's funding already in the project form.
I think it's still within the change order allocation that was in the original.
Okay.
So coming out of the original East State funding?
If you put that in there, Jim, I'm sorry, I missed that.
I, I don't think I put that in my update, no.
Okay. If, yeah, okay, so if something happens and that wasn't where it's coming from, we'll need to know prior to Tuesday. But it sounds like we're good with the funding that was there. Okay, anything else on the East State change order? Okay, capital funds, lens? Yes, go ahead.
First one, we have capital budget 221, the Buffalo Street Underpass for pumps and structure improvement. That project started in, in May 10th, 2022. And it was funded by SWF Fund Balance and Subline Items Leftover Funds. Right now, we have a balance of 377,409 in that fund right now. Any questions on this one?
Yeah, I must have those for a second. Is that work completed?
No, I'm sorry.
It has not started yet, okay.
I think this just went out for bid a couple of days ago, like, like Friday last week.
Do we know why the council is asked to put money aside for something and then it takes three years for it to?
I can answer. But in addition to the change in directors, we put money aside, we got the consulting firm, and we went out to bid originally, and we had no bidders. So we had to make some revisions in order to get companies to bid on us.
And this is probably two DPW directors ago?
I believe this started by after Bob Ray.
Wow, okay.
Because this project was talked about even before the capital fund was in place, so.
But that, that dollar originally came from like Bob Ray's projected gas, I'm assuming? John, do you recall? Can't hear you. Nope.
We do, we do have a consulting firm. I can't say for sure if it's their members or if it's Bob Ray's members, but we do have a consulting firm that assisted on this.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Hang on.
You're a little low now. The volume is all the way up.
What, what project is this?
It's the Buffalo Street Underpass, the pumps and stuff. The capital fund was started in '22.
Yeah, that was with Bob Ray.
So that amount may not even be enough now that considering time. That's what I was kinda wondering. I guess we won't know until it fits.
Well, can you tell me again what the amount is?
377,409.
We did take bids the other day. I think we made it under that number.
Okay.
And we had a, we sensed that Scopi being CP Ward, you know, is a very well-known contractor who was a little bitter, so. You will be getting a recommendation on that for, what, two weeks from today?
Okay, so then there is possibility that we can get that done. We just hope that there's no change orders or anything. John, we can hear your background noise. That's what I was just gonna, I was gonna text.
So was, remind, refresh my memory too. This was to replace our pumps, correct?
Correct. It's the stormwater pumping station that keeps the Buffalo Street Underpass clear.
That's a builder of the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, next one is capital budget 222, Fornace Park Lighting Project. That project started back in September 13th, 2022. And it was funded by the grant from the county for $400,000. And the project is completely done with all the credit funding. I think there's some work left to be done, but that will be done until I leave, will I manage?
That's?
Yeah, go ahead.
That's where they, they still have to change the lights at Field 1 and 2, correct?
I believe so.
They have to put the lights on, put the light bars on.
Because you changed eight and nine, and then they had to change the transformer out by the shed, by Field 2. So now they still have to change all the light bars at one and, one and two.
I believe that's correct. I thought those lights were new. Was, I don't think those fields were lit.
No, one and two has always been lit. Eight, eight, nine were not lit and they've been illuminated. One and two was replacements, because that's the youth football field, softball, the league field.
Yeah, okay. Yes, I believe that's where we're at.
So have we purchased everything we need for those projects?
I think the lights were purchased.
Okay, so then the internal is simply, is simply the cost for our electricians and staffing?
And some rental and what?
Rental. Well, it looks like we have $1,283 left?
No.
No? Is that what it says?
That was, that was, we went over a little bit, but we were using, uh, we used a line item to make the difference. Because we don't wanna take anything back to the county, so we, we used everything.
Okay.
So this one's been made whole, it can?
Yeah, it does, there was a balance right now, it can be closed as well.
Yeah, we can close this one. Um, can we add, um, as a line item on parks then, when, like a ti- a timeline to get the lights up in one and two?
It's on the agenda today?
It's on the agenda today? I looked at it, but I, oh, Fornace, okay. I was gonna say, I didn't see lights, but, okay, good, we'll be open.
Which they set in the spring, this year. They set it, what, maybe a year ago? They were putting those lights up in the spring. They got held up with the transformer, caused the delay.
Well, I was like, this spring? I mean, like, May, the end of May, right?
Springish.
I, yeah, I, like, I think.
Expand that, spring, spring.
Okay. Okay, next.
Next one is capital budget 226, the Homeowners Cyro Public Program. That was started back in May 9th, 2023. And it was funded by Council Transfer from the Fund Balance. And right now, we have a balance of $27,235.40 in that fund to be used.
So this is one that I ask that we, not necessarily here, but we, we kinda look at our process because I think it closes a little bit early for people to do their, um, put in their applications. So I'd like us to, to look at that and, and maybe lengthen that out so more people have a chance to do it. Because I think this is a wonderful worthwhile program for our residents. I just don't think it's as well utilized as we would like. Alderman?
And that this one too was also opened up, John, to rentals, correct, John? But we, did we stop at commercial or did we include commercial? I think it was stipulations.
I, I thought we opened it up to rentals, but I didn't think commercial was yet.
So just, so just residential, right, John?
Think so.
Okay.
Residential, non-hotel parking lot.
Yep, okay. I couldn't remember if we went as far as commercial.
Because I, I think that this will go, particularly with rentals, hopefully a long way to helping them make some of the changes that are needed. But I would like us to revisit the, um, when it opens and when it closes. Because I had somebody who was after the date and, I don't know, I, I sent that out, but it was a while ago. I'll, I'll find that and, and send it out to you and then maybe we can look and see. Because I, it closes fairly early in terms of the application process. So, yes.
Joe, some of the, is some of the problem this, because there was other people that had reported stating that they were told that there was no funds available for this. Is some of this just because of the workload? Because this is something that Dave Cranhill kind of has to do in-house, correct? I know when the junior engineer that's, I believe, that position's still funded through the budget, it's just vacant, correct?
No, I don't think it's, yeah.
It took it out? Okay, so, but Ale, who was, she would do that, but that was done in-house on that inspections to make sure that it was done, correct?
Correct.
So is some of the problem just the fact that Dave's got too much on his plate, can't get to it?
It's absolutely part of it all. I mean, some of it's on the corner of my desk. We never got to it. And we've, we've tried to redistribute it, but, you know, there's really nobody else there to redistribute it to.
So I guess that, and also looking at this is we need to figure out a way that we can get that part done. If there's a logjam of his workload, if that's the, really the crux of it all, to, can't exceed the deadline or being told it's not available at this time, then we need to look at that.
Right, and I also think, one thing that may have happened on being told it wasn't available is, you know, people were contacting us right when I started, which was just before the changeover in the fiscal year. So, you know, in, in May, there wasn't any money, you know, already all been allocated.
No, if I just went out and wanted, and I wasn't using this program, remind me if I just wanted to dig up my sidewalk and replace my sidewalk. Does, Dave doesn't come out there and do some type of inspection on that, correct? That would be, I pull the permit?
You should, you should pull a permit and, and this is a topic that I think it warrants some more discussion than we do, you know, have here. But, you know, I would argue that somebody needs to go look at that because we should have an engineering standard for the sidewalk that you're going to install to just make sure that that standard is met.
But currently, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have it.
Currently, I honestly, I think you're correct that most of those situations are getting put in and we are not.
Because then we are using a city-approved contractor who built the sidewalk to our standard. So then to streamline, and then why can't codes look at it like they might in my case?
Yeah.
If it gets the job done?
So, yeah, that, I think that's a problem in distributing the work across the city. Not just my department, but, you know, across the entire city staff.
Alderman?
I was gonna say that that's a topic that we should put a pin in, because I was gonna make that same statement, that I think that's something that, I mean, if someone's just coming out and looking at that particular thing and you need to get a permit in the first place, then maybe that's something the codes can handle. But like I said, that's, that's another day. When do we do the budget? Is that, we start discussions in February? So is this something that we should maybe put on for end of January?
The council, the council has to have the budget till then by February 15th. So honestly, January 2nd is when we're gonna have it.
Right, but I'm, I wanna, I, I mean, it's not my committee, but I wanna put this back on to discuss prior to the budget, assuming that we will continue this and the fact that we have a, a balance here, I mean, that gets rolled into the general fund anyways. I think those parameter changes that John and I made, we did through, after the matters, but we did it through the city ops. Because it was a matter of how it, how it did it. We didn't do it through John.
Right, it was through city ops instead of finance, okay.
It's what we did. That was a topic that was there before when we changed them.
So personally, I mean, I would like to revisit that topic. And, I mean, if, if the chief is available then, and if the DPW director is available then, maybe we can have a good discussion on it and, uh, that way we can move forward with, uh, what we're doing here tonight. So, I don't know, late January, early February, as long as it's before the budget timeline. That way, we have a good discussion and then, uh, we'll move on to the, after the first, after the first of February. So the city ops after the first?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, that money will not go away?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, after I stated that, I was, I was, that's that old man memory is what that is. I'm used to it, but sometimes I haven't clarified it. Thanks, though. Appreciate it.
Um, next one is capital project 227. I work for Enforcement Software. And that project started back in May 9th, 2023, and it was funded by General Fund Balance. Right now, there's a balance of 1,375 in there. And I think that project is completely done. Starting this year, we start using the line items to pay for the substitution from the code to, or the code to document.
Is there anything else that we need to utilize?
I, I spoke to the chief briefly. I don't think there's anything we, as far as for the capital budget, which closes. Am I right?
Yeah.
We could move, move that 13 hundred somewhere else to the capital budget, definitely.
Do we have?
Just on a summary, I, I, maybe you get some feedback as to how that program is working?
I work in general or the citizen complete modules, I've had that.
Both, all of it?
All of it, yeah.
Just, even an email's fine, Eric. Just to, even an email's fine, Eric.
Um, so I'm for the project is done, moving it, since it's a software. Didn't we not put together a capital project for IT monies? Could we move the, into, uh?
There's capital project one eighty, we can, we can.
One eighty, would people be in agreement to move it into, uh, IT's capital project?
I, I am perfectly in agreeance with that.
Okay.
It's, what is a capital fund?
One eighty.
One eighty?
Yep.
From two two seven.
From two two seven here.
Yep, so we'll, I'll add a little towards your budget, cause I know you guys are sorely underfunded in what you need to do there, so. Anything else on that?
Next one is capital budget two twenty-nine, um, the wells refurbishment. And that project also started back in May twenty twenty-three, and it was, it was funded by fund balance. And right now, we have a balance of forty-five thousand, two hundred fifty dollars left in there. Um, I think we had three wells to refurbish, two of the, two of them is already done, already done, there's one more left to be done. I spoke to Brad earlier today, and there's one needs to be done with that leftover funnel.
Do we know which well it is?
Uh, I don't know.
So in correlation to the email we received, uh, that we'll be discussing here soon about our water problem, this one here, the well, it was mentioned that the well was down, is this the well that they were referring to in that email?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Um, M eighteen.
Okay. So hopefully we can get this one, go through the process to get it going again?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's what we are, we're working on right now. You know, do we repair the current stripping tower? Or do we go for, remove the stripping tower? Spend, admittedly spend much more money, you get a different piece of mechanical equipment that serves the same purpose. Stripping towers are, as I understand it, about forty years old. If this one is rotted out, it's probable with the other two or the, the other one, because the two wells on the south side of the river are serviced by a single stripping tower, that that tower has either got the same problems or is very close to having the same problems. But given the two different well sites, the water chemistry is a little different. So we need to investigate all of that. But ultimately, we're gonna need to take those stripping towers down and put in the, um, different stripping technology, which is a box with a bunch of pans. So, if you're trying to make a judgment, is the repair cost on the existing stripping tower M eighteen, is it worth going ahead and spending that money and getting whatever we get of additional years? Or do we just stop at this point and remove it and put the improved technology in?
Is this the same one we, uh, sent the robot in?
That is, well, that was the reservoir.
The same reservoir, okay.
We.
Well, okay.
Well, as you're thinking about it, I appreciate looking at both things, right? Because I think sometimes we've taken care of things in the short order that haven't served us in the long order. And so I appreciate you are looking and saying, you know, which way are we going to be better served as, as a city? Um, because I think we have talked about, we'd rather, if we need to do an investment, if we can, it's something that is gonna last us and have some longevity, so thanks for looking at both.
Okay. So, uh, first I wanna apologize. So I thought this was directed to everyone, so, uh, just briefly, uh, Cat County Environmental Health Department got ahold of the city to inform them of work that's needed at the reservoir that needs to be done at the top. So that's something that I would imagine should come to the council and we're gonna have to discuss.
Yeah.
That was the email I was referring to, I assumed that was to everyone. I, I saw you.
Any, anything else on the capital funds? Okay, thank you, Lance, we look forward to your next installment. How many left? Oh, good deal. Oh, take us through till the end of the year. Okay, um, under capital projects, we have the Bartlett House roof. And it's the James show again.
Um, so I have been continuing to gather information about, about the Bartlett House roof and have finally, um, found all the past information that people had put, put together, getting ready to put it out to bid. Um, I have learned that it never actually did go out to bid. RFP was started, but not finished. We do have in hand a quote from a local roofing contractor that I've been working off of. So I have the technical specs now for all the pieces, up to and including an example shingle on my floor in my office, if you are so inclined and really wonder what they look like. Um, I have like one more question and then I can just write the RFP. My intention is to publish the RFP right after the first of January. So we'll have it in the roofing contractor's hands in their off-season and hopefully we'll be the first people that they, they get it when the weather breaks and they can actually go to work. Now, I do have to tell you, the quote I have in hand from a year, well, it's December of twenty-four, is considerably more than the money we have on the line item. So, once we have bids, we're probably going to be rambling to five hundred. So, that's where we're at on that one.
So, didn't we talk about this a couple of years ago, or was it the wall we were talking about, to get confused with the wall? Was it the wall?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was both, but we funded, um, the wall and a couple of other smaller things.
It was, so some small things, but then somebody had told them, I think, they could do the roof for like fifteen thousand dollars or something.
Yeah, that's something great.
Weird number.
There's a no, there's a no zero.
Fifteen would probably be worse than five.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about fixing the roof, so preparing it, and the grant funding was available.
Anything else on the Bartlett House roof? Okay, under new referrals for consideration, we have the tree removal. And, um, again, we received some information from James on that, so. Thank you, and thank you for the, the breakdown, cause I, I think you did a great job of the analysis, so if you wanna give us a brief overview, we'll see.
Um, so I did take, uh, new bids for a tree removal contractor. I did essentially the same analysis that I did the first time we took the bids. You know, trying to place the weight on the items that we use the most. And going through that, um, you know, we ended up with the recommendation for Scott Stone Grinding as being the bidder where we would most probably get the most work done for the funding we have available.
Any questions? We all have the summary, um, the edit notes that, that James had put in there that he clarified, so. Any? Okay, so we'll put it on to, uh, approve and move to approve this contract. We'll get that on the agenda. Okay. All right, if nothing else, we have committee reports, we have none, I move to adjourn, do we have a second? All in the venue, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, I follow the Public Safety Committee, November eighteenth, uh, the regular show, all the persons present. Uh, approval of amendments from Tuesday, November four, I'll make a motion for the second, second by Benyon, all in favor? Opposed? Uh, unfinished business, we have new signal, uh, West Bay Street, Independence Drive. Uh, we postponed this last time because, uh, John wasn't here and he was the one that brought this forward. But I also sent, uh, texts everyone to show them that one day I was driving, uh, and the light was working. So I didn't know about the satisfactory, I did not wanna postpone it definitely. Uh, it was just unfinished business anyway. So, John, did you have anything you wanted to, this is your baby?
No, I, I noticed the, uh, light has been repaired, I just didn't know if Director Sprague, um, would be able to answer. At one time, the city had purchased a new installation for that intersection. And if you don't have the answer currently, if you could look into it, uh, because it had, uh, I think, like new crossing, timing timers and things like that. Um, so do you, do you know if that has been purchased and installed?
I believe we have that equipment, um, in the shop. And, uh, now we have the complication of the RACE grant, uh, for West State Street. And based on the preliminary definition of that streetscape project, I think that installation is one that is target, or that intersection is one that is targeted for a roundabout. So, now we're indecisive, I guess. I mean, do we go ahead and upgrade the signal and then two years later have it taken down? Um, so right now, our, our thought is, we're gonna stand down until the RACE grant either, hopefully the RACE grant goes forward, but as we all know, um, things are a little topsy-turvy in Washington DC and a lot of those grants are getting pulled back. We do not have a signed contract for it yet. We have been told that ours is still gonna go forward. So we're optimistic about that, but until we see the contract and we can get a design consultant involved, we don't really wanna jump in and do a bunch of work on that intersection.
And for the follow-up to that, um, is this installation specific to that location or are we, because obviously they're not cheap. So, um, it was purchased a number of years ago, is it something that could be utilized at a different location?
Absolutely, because it's all programmable. Um, I mean, and there would probably be a few parts and pieces that would have to be different on a different intersection. But the vast majority of it is essentially programmable and we would have to set that up anyways.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Jim, that's one of the tube sets, right, that we talked about in your office, when we talked about that other intersection?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on that topic? So we're gonna postpone this, we're not gonna do anything, cause it's just a discussion. All right, moving on, crosswalk signage on North Seventh Street, John?
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so this was an issue that was brought to me, um, by a number of residents on North Seventh Street and those, uh, um, the nearby parallel streets, uh, where children walk to the middle school. And, um, right now, I think North Seventh had been repaved and there is a designated crosswalk, right near what used to be, was it called the Nabisco Building or the administrative building, um, of the Ole Miss School District? There used to be a crosswalk there right at the Reed Street in North Seventh. And I'm just asking if that can be put back in?
Yeah, so those, those crosswalks will be replaced in the spring as soon as, you know, the weather allows. And they also, you know, there's the bigger question of the school zone around the school campus, which is sort of a separate question, but, and I funded it to bridge it just the other day. But my belief is we can define a school zone that comes right down Seventh Street there because of that, um, back entrance into the school campus. So not only will we get to crosswalks, but we should get some school zone signage in there in the future.
Yeah, I think that would be, um, that would be great. Additionally, I think it's worth having a conversation, which should, and it should be. Uh, I, I think it would meet the distance requirement for a, a school zone area. I also think that the commercial installation, um, the business that's on the corner of North Seventh and Wayne Street, um, at least along the North Seventh route should be looked at. Jim, Jim, um, there is no, there is no proper dedicated sidewalk there. In fact, uh, it's been, the entire city right-of-way has been paved, um, and a number of vehicles parked along that city right-of-way. And at one time, the commercial property was, or in- industrial property, didn't, it, it had a lack of parking. However, that business has expanded and purchased parking across the street. I've tried reaching out to them on a couple of occasions, um, to try to put in a safe cross, a safe sidewalk, um, and not lap top and, and where people don't park, uh, because kids walk by there. And so, so I would ask that, uh, maybe you put that on as something to look into.
Okay.
Thank you.
McCall?
I was just trying to, to find the email, email, just to make sure it did go out to all of us. But James had sent, you had sent the email, kind of looking at, um, as you're looking to relook at that whole city area and the high school and that with where to designate and make some changes, cause I know North Fourth has some issues and such. So, yeah, I, I think that that is a, I think that whole area is a longstanding issue, you know, whether we're talking about that North Third, um, portion with its kind of unsafe where, where that one bend in the road is. North Fourth with some of the issues with, with parking and, and residential issues. So, yeah, I thought that was helpful and, and to kind of look at it in its totality versus individual streets and signage.
Yeah, I too appreciate the, uh, the email, especially the descriptions, uh, identifying the fact that the school's on, uh, speed limits. Uh, some areas are posted at fifteen and some are posted at twenty. So, and, and I can't wait to hear about, uh, you know, what justifies which from which, you know, or if maybe we need to raise the fifteen to twenty because they're high schoolers, or maybe they just need to go down to fifteen because they're students, period, you know, I mean, I don't know. So, uh, I, I mean, I had one walk across the street, I don't know, about a few hours ago, as I walked by, they had some giddy up, so they moved a little faster.
I think it's, if, if I'm not mistaken, it's fifteen by the two, Ontario is twenty at the middle school or twenty-five at the middle school and twenty at the high school.
So we have three different speed limits, right?
Is that?
It's twenty by the middle.
Twenty by the middle school? Sorry, usually thirty.
And then, uh, something else that, uh, in, in the email, uh, the proposed next steps, you know, I believe you did a research and everything, the common council's gonna, uh, be looking to approve, uh, draft resolutions determining the previous school zone and adopt the new one once this is all settled. So, uh, I, I think this is good, it's something that, you know, needing to be looked at, and it was all brought up because of this topic that was on Seventh Street, so. So, John, you have your questions, we're, we're gonna wait until the spring and we're good on that one. Do we need to put it back on and revisit, or just gonna let it go and bring it back up when the time comes?
Yeah, we can check it in the spring, it's totally good, thank you.
Okay, cool. All right, any other questions on that one? No, moving on to, uh, new referrals for consideration to Safer Grant Award. This is some good stuff there, Jason. Chief?
Uh, so the mayor wanted me to, um, brief council on our Safer Grant Award. Uh, so back in June, I came, um, asking for permission to submit for the Safer Grant, um, which is kind of the premier grant for the fire service. There's, there's two big grants that all fire departments usually try to go for. The AFT Grant for equipment, the Safer Grant for personnel. Uh, so we were awarded, um, what we put in. So, we were awarded what we put in for, which is four positions. The grant will fund salary and benefits for three years for four firefighters. There is a city match, so the city match is twenty-five percent year one, twenty-five percent year two, and sixty-five percent year three. However, the, while the intent of the grant is to make the community safer by putting more firefighters in the fire stations and on the trucks, it will have a cost savings on the overtime line to help offset that city match. Grant period runs from March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-six, until March of two thousand twenty-nine. So, that'll be a little tight for us to hire right away, because the firefighter exam is January tenth. It takes two to three months to get results back, plus three or four weeks to get hired and in the door and then trained. So, there will be a little bit of a delay by a couple of months, so we might not capture the full grant period. But overall, it's really exciting, really good for us. Questions?
Chief, how much was that grant for again?
The total federal portion is five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and three dollars.
Yes, federal, so there's another portion?
The local match.
Oh, okay, yes.
I have those numbers if you want.
Sure. That's gonna be the three years combined, or?
I have it for each year.
Each year?
So, the first two years are gonna be seventy-seven thousand, thirteen dollars.
Okay.
And the third year is two hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars.
What was the third year?
Two hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty-six.
All right. Are you presently short-staffed in the department right now, or are these just gonna be additional staffing?
So, we left two positions unfunded during budget season, so these positions will fill those two seats and then give us two extra.
So, do you have a projected cost savings from overtime?
No, not at this time. I kind of ran some preliminary numbers, but there are so many variables to try and calculate that out. It would be difficult. I can send you what I have, though, if you'd like.
Yeah, just as we're kind of looking at everything, thank you.
All right, Nancy?
Yeah, this would probably be the new mayor's problem, I guess, or question. But we're gonna staff and commit that through a grant, which is great for the city, we're gonna additional staffing. But say in two thousand twenty-nine, we have another budget shortfall, are we committed to keep these additional employees hired for a certain length of time?
We're committed, so we accepted this grant on September twenty-fourth this year. So, on that date, I had to send them the current roster. So, we are committed during the grant period to keep that current roster plus four positions for the grant period. After the grant period is done, they really have no control.
It's mayor's next problem. Let's get down to the road, in case there's a budget shortfall. Assuming we may have, may or may not have, a few employees that may retire in between that time frame?
Yeah, so during the grant period, if somebody retires, we have to replace them.
Okay.
To keep that original roster full, plus the four. After the grant period, if somebody retires, we don't necessarily have to.
Yep, okay.
Although I will say, if call buying continues to trend the way it is, we do need these people, absolutely, so.
Yeah, future mayor's problem is, as I said, as you mentioned, but you gotta stop smoking or anything.
Probably might be leaving your services.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that goodness. All right, if there is nothing else for this committee, approval of made amendments, reports, we have none. Our motion to adjourn, committee, a second. Second by McCall, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Adjourned to Public Safety? I'll call the Order of City Operations Committee. On the record show that all members are present. I will make a motion for the approval of amendments on November fourth, twenty-five, committee, second. Second by Alvin and Kiri. Under unfinished business, it was the motorized vehicles on the sidewalks. I believe that was emailed, right?
Yes.
That was Tiffany, did you count them?
Uh, they did not, but I'm feeling like...
So, that was just on for, was just on for the update on those numbers, correct?
They had, and we see if we had the guidance from the state.
That's right, thank you.
We have not received, my spoke to the chair representative, we don't.
Okay. Okay, so, just put it out till the first of the, after the first, and we'll check in on it, see if we get anything. And then, we just look at our own. Just hope we're good, so. I thought we were good. Why were we waiting for the stuff from the state, then? Because they, it was mentioned that they were gonna make some changes. We're calling, correct?
They were gonna send some guidance, because a lot of municipalities are having similar issues.
Because there was the class one, remember all that?
Yeah, they were sending some guidance, remember, we can and can't do with what's currently in the law. But, I don't know, I'm sure we haven't heard anything.
Just put it out there, we get it, we get it, we don't, we just leave it.
She'll have to get it, you want to put it back on?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Sorry.
So, in looking at, it looks like, and you guys can correct me if I'm looking at this wrong, but, so it looks like there were calls. So, it looks like there's thirty-four calls, right? And if I look over here, it has kind of the locations and stuff. But I think what we were looking for is how many citations.
Anything with an AR, CB, or something that followed, whatever the number, go all the way over.
That's what I was looking, because the citation, there's significantly fewer citations than kind of the calls, is what I guess I'm looking at. Because it looks like there may be one, two, three, four, maybe five people got it.
Fifteen, it's fifteen total.
Right, but it looks like some of those are the same one, right? Because they're kind of, kind of clumped.
They may have gotten two citations for two different charges under the same call.
That's what I'm thinking, so it looks like we're five individuals for maybe fifteen charges. Because that's what it looks like to me, and that's...
Yeah, six for fifteen.
Yes. Yeah, so that's what I'm, so I lose thirty-four calls, about six people got a citation.
Ron probably sent that, maybe you can ask Ron if that's right. So, five stops resulted in tickets of the number of stops, and the rest were issued warnings, correct?
Yeah, there were, there was like one person received tickets under the vehicle traffic law possibly, and then others were local charges.
Okay. Anything else on that? Okay, it's different. Nothing under new referrals, no committee reports. I'll make a motion for adjournment, committee, second. Second by all in the state, all in favor? Aye.
Okay, call to Order of Youth and Corporation Committee. Please note that all members present, approval of the minutes from previous committee meeting, November fourth. Motion to approve, can I get a second?
Third.
Second, um...
Nope, nope, can't count, sorry.
Sorry, somebody else, thank you. All is in favor.
No, me either. You get a third one.
Can you second that?
All right, I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, no unfinished business, and then new referrals for consideration. These came from our discussions at this meet, a previous meeting, Oak Hill Park and the trees, right? Where is it? No. Updating.
So...
The wall.
Yeah, there's a couple of things. One is the trees that need to be come down. We just really need to have a kind of a firm plan on that. But the larger, longer standing issue is as you, as you face the main entrance to the park on the left-hand side, it just is unsightly. It detracts from the beauty of the park. It looks, yeah, just bad. And I, ever since I've been on the council, I have brought this up. And we have gotten absolutely nowhere, other than one RFP that had crazy amount of money on it. So, I think that whatever the reluctance is to, to address this issue, I'm hoping that we can address it going forward, and that we can have a plan in place that come the spring, we have a lot of things going on apparently in the spring, but come the beginning of the spring, that we have a firm plan in place, we have dollars now that we said. We, I think that part of going over the capital funds, and that is that we have learned, we have pockets of money in variety of places that we perhaps didn't know were there, that, that we can expend. So, the money has been there, the money is there. I just want to plan a thing. And I know we give you a thousand things, James, and, and your department's only so big, but if we could, please come up with a plan to, I don't care honestly, if we put big rocks, I mean, Dr. Balacki has had a great plan to put like some staggering down on that to kind of have it. I think he would be a great resource in terms of addressing that issue. Certainly, the money we have available will address it, plus tiny trees that they replaced our big trees with that have been supposed to be sound barrier for attractiveness. I don't know what we need to do with those, but if we could just get a, a plan by the beginning of spring, you know, maybe by April, as to what to do, and then we can get something out and get that in the works.
A plan for the entire park?
No, just as you face the park, where the stairs are to the left-hand side, it just is overgrown, it's unsightly, it's, you'll see, this side is nice, this side looks...
Yes, I think this was the area, I've heard the complaint that it's so steep, it's very difficult to...
It's the south side of the long street stairs.
Yeah.
Yes, and we have had neighbors complaining about it ever since I've been on the council. And, and the reason, you know, so we had a variety of kind of ideas, but I think Dr. Balacki's idea is the best, to put in some tiers. You know, we see it all the time when people have, and I think it would be beautiful, so maybe we could see what he has and then see what we need to do to send it out to a landscaper, an RFP for it.
So, it's more, I have a question real quick. Have, I know, not to take away the green, but have we ever thought of, you know, having it be cemented or concrete and then stamping like the name of the park in it, and with like an establish, whatever? I mean, I've seen that at places too, where, you know, it's like, since it's so steep, and then you have the name of the park in the cement.
I think that's, that would be great, but it's actually a huge part, right? That, that section is very large, and it wraps around the side.
Some of it, I think, twenty-five, six.
Yeah, so, yeah, so put a big medallion there, put rocks there. At this point in time, I am open to almost anything there.
Yeah, I was just gonna state the same thing that Sonja mentioned, that since I've been on council, one or two years longer than you, we were getting emails about how unsightly that is on that wall, and they were also complaining about the opposite side there on that one side street.
Yep.
But it was mentioned before, so I wanted to mention again, the hardscape thing. Somewhere in Ole Miss, I can't think of where, maybe it's in one of these other towns I've ventured to throughout the weeks. But there's some spot where there's hardscape, just all rock, scrap. And I know Jaren and I have mentioned before, that instead of putting some of this greenery along this new construction, we should be investing more hardscape, because then we don't have to worry about the manpower cutting the grass and the other things that are involved with that. But because that hill is so steep, you know, we don't necessarily have to do small peat gravel. We can do, I don't know the rock sizes, but I know there's a rock size that we can put in and get the first layer kind of tamped in, and then put the bigger layers on top, and it should be more cost-effective, more cost savings to the city than doing. And I do like the concrete idea, but the fact that concrete is just expensive.
Right.
Just, just put some type of landscape in there, hardscape in there, make a design, whatever, you know, three color, two color, one color, whatever. That would make it a lot better looking of what it is, and then that would eliminate a lot of the issues there. On the, on the right-hand side, while they have done some things there, I mean, they basically just created another spot where we need volunteers to come in and weed and stuff. So, I mean, there, there are things out there that you can do to beautify area without having to go back month to month, week to week to do maintenance. I think we need to be smarter about that with the city, and then we can then allocate our employees to do other things, so.
Are any of those plans, or you said somebody drafted something up, are those on file anywhere?
Well, Dr. Balacki had put in, he had come up, because he works with, as our beautification committee and that, and he had put together kind of a tiered plan, and the tiered plan could include hardscape too. So, I mean, I think that we just have to get something, I agree, I think that we have wonderful volunteers that are tasked to keep up with what they have, so we want something that is low maintenance. Throw some hostas in there, because they don't need any weeding or something, right? Whatever it is, at this point in time, we need something. So, if we can by April, so that we know that come, you know, May, that we might be able to get moving on it, I would appreciate it. I, I think there's lots of ideas out there. I would lean on Dr. Balacki, because I think that he has done a good job in terms of the beautification committee and stuff, but also be mindful of not adding a lot of greenery that we're gonna have to continually prune and weed.
I was gonna ask, didn't we, one time, not long ago, year or so ago, actually get a cost out doing that, and it was quite...
I thought it was on the backside, was it on the backside?
I mean, we didn't get a cost for what Dr. Balacki had, Mary, Bill had just said.
Quite, there was... I, I think it was more like light steeping with a cloth and...
It was, it was for like steeped garden beds, and it was ridiculous.
Did you hear the thousand dollars?
No, that was when we sent it out the first time without any, and somebody came in with a crazy bid, and the other person said, how much money do you have? And then we'll tell you what we can do. So, I think that was just craziness. Instead, let's, let's get a good, you know, let's get some recommendations from, you know, those who are already working in the city and being mindful of our constraints, and then have something in place so that we can put it out for bid in April and get it done, if that works for you.
Okay.
Just let it grow, call it a rain, darling.
It's already been, it's already been, yeah. And, oh, and while we're talking, we do need to go around to Putnam, because Putnam is, right, that's what it is. That side was, that side is, is unsightly, I'm sure there's all kinds of rodents that like to live in there, so.
And that fund is down eighty-four, right?
Right.
Because we took eighty-four to the elevator?
So, that level is, was it two hundred thousand?
Yep.
Is that all for?
What, that's?
Four hundred, two hundred thousand, four ninety-nine, ninety-two, seven, seven.
So, and we certainly do not need two hundred thousand to do that, that landscaping, because we want to do some other things with money too.
How many people has, what, you can buy three bags of gravel for five dollars, and I put it in my car, and, I mean, how, everybody in the council put ten bags in your car, and call it up there, we can cover that.
And you kind of plan it out, all these shoes have gone on?
I'm just saying, it should not cost that much money, so.
Yes, but you also need to, if you're going to do that, you need to have the wire netting, so it doesn't all slide in and all that other stuff. So, it's a little bit more than that, but I appreciate the confidence you have in us.
I mean, my house turned out pretty good.
All right. Okay, so with Oak Hill Park, we wanna just, you know, draw on the resources that we have, or what other people have come up with, and then see what works best, then?
Yeah, let's put the landscaping on for April, and why do you say let's throw it on to April? The trees, you did say though, that sometimes now, once we had a contractor in play... The trees, you did say though, that sometimes now, once we had a contractor in place, that it was a good time to perhaps do it, because it's a downtime. So, I think that maybe you can report out on maybe in, in a month or so.
We asked that, if some of the trees up there were, could come out of the ash funk, you were gonna, you said you were sure of anywhere.
Yeah, I have, actually I have all those numbers, um, so going forward, I'll be able to give you an update on the number of trees in Oak Hill Park, and how many are ash, and how many we know are dead today, and, um, actually, we were able to extract all, pretty much all that information from our existing tree inventory, um, so we'll have to make a little update of it. We have a good handle on it, as soon as we have a contractor, we'll be in motion.
Excellent. Okay.
Alright. Um, okay, moving on to Foreness Park, um, when we met last, we talked about the bad shape that the park is in. Um, obviously, we need the lights, um, up, I know we had asked last year for some work to be done on the fields. That was a previous DPW director, so in, I think it was Field Ten, we were moving the back stop back. And we were, um, redoing like the, the, um, you know, no, I can't think of the word.
In Field?
No, um.
Fencing?
Oh my gosh, I'm gonna say it's the batter box, but it's not the batter box, the players were.
Dugout.
Oh my gosh, yes, the dugout, sorry, I know. Um, they were looking, weren't they looking for, they were had, they were putting that down there? Cause they were using it for tournament play. And, I'm pretty sure that was, but I, according to the mayor, that got delayed or never finished, or they didn't start it, or it was in progress.
I mean, just as we're talking about money, I mean, I said that, I mean, honestly, spending money on Field Ten is not needed, they, once you change them lights, with the lights that went into eight, nine, they basically gave them two extra fields every single night of play. And then you got Field One, so you could essentially play six games a night down there. I mean, to, to spend any money down there is foolish, and not to mention the fact that you can't get there with vehicles you can kind of cut in between the two other fields.
Is that the one like?
That's the one, all the way back up against the deck. It's all the way back.
And I don't know if they used it, like, I don't know what their usage was of it.
No, they used, they used one, eight and nine. And eight and nine got illuminated this year, which essentially gave them two additional fields, so to spend any money on Field Ten would absolutely be foolish.
Yeah, and I'll have to go back and recall, cause I think they also talked about providing funds for it, I don't know.
Yeah, but one time Field Ten was discussed, because people walk, John was, walked there, and at one time it was actually even being a dog park, that thing would have more use as a dog park than it would be for an additional softball field.
John?
Just a quick follow-up, are the lights all working down over there?
Um.
We still have two fields.
One and two.
Eight, nine are on, John.
So not all?
Eight, nine are done, one and two was not changed, they had to change the transformer, that's supposed to be done in the, um, in the spring, sometimes spring-ish. But one and two currently do have lights, it's a replacement of lights.
Okay.
Um, so along with the other, I guess, challenges or issues at the park, I know we talked about the playground equipment was really old. What are some other things that we would wanna see updated, or that, um, are an issue down there?
You know, I, I think we talked before about, you know, the, the restrooms and stuff, and kind of reassessing that, I don't think anything's been, you know, because not only do we want to fix what's broken, but we wanna keep what's there up, updated and in good shape. So I think having a, a plan to kind of take a look at and saying, you know, what things, and, you know, that's where we can add parks to kind of give us a list of what things, as you go around and as you guys are seeing the park, what things need to have, um, are gonna be coming up for repair, kind of what a wish list is, because then, you know, I think we'd like to put together that comprehensive plan, but that really needs to be driven by what the Parks Department needs.
I think the last meeting, uh, the mayor said that he had, they had done, somebody had come and done, um, a comprehensive plan for the park, for that park, for Foreness?
For, for all the parks.
There was a very, very large plan for Foreness Park, there was a funding opportunity, but the council determined, or decided not to apply for that funding at that time, will be due somewhere. Have a draft plan for Foreness that includes, I think it's like a doc.
Is, is that something that we could have shared, just to kind of look at it?
I, if you can figure out where it's at, we'll find out.
Okay, just to see what, I mean, that was before, like, on the council.
Yeah, she's right there, there was talk about fishing dock out on Forest Pond, and it was all kinds of stuff.
Okay.
Probably put some decorative lighting over it.
So, was that just for Foreness, or do we indeed have a comprehensive plan for all the park?
Foreness.
Just Foreness?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I do, you know, kind of going back to what we said initially, is that we think there needs to be that comprehensive park plan. And again, that'll help us update our parks, so that we don't get surprises with needing large sums of money in short order, cause something's broken or no longer works.
And then I'm now working with Carrie to see what our opportunities are for the Ralph Wilson Foundation for Playground Equipment, yeah, so.
I would think that maybe Joe could work with you and Carrie, and then you guys can come back with a, like, we could use the email ideas rather than meeting.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know who put out the agenda, I mean, you said we wanna talk about it today, so that's why it's there.
Well, I think that last time we had talked about the playground equipment, I had mentioned that Joe and I could get together on it, cause.
Oh, okay.
Foreness is literally like, pretty much the park that Ward One uses.
Right.
Cause we don't, there is no park at all at Ward One, actually, there's a parklet, some green grass, I think up on, off Kingston, but there is no park. So, we kind of talked about that.
Okay, so, alright, well, I think it'd be nice to see the, um, plan, if you guys find it. Just to see what initially was out there, and then, you know, what makes sense and what doesn't. Um, okay, the Homer Street Park?
Yeah, just wanna be quick, um, this was brought up last month, two weeks ago, whenever you brought it up. The mayor asked everybody to write by, in case you weren't the mayor of the park, it's off of Homer Street, Buffalo Street. I'm just asking for two things to, uh, I'm not even asking for them tonight, is to get an estimate, get a bid, put them in the budget, if you guys approve it in the budget, fine. First thing, I think, which is important, is I'm asking for a gate to be installed, there's already, it's already fenced in. Just asking for a gate to be installed at the entrance off of Homer Street. This is to keep the children, when they're playing kickball or whatever, running, from running out of the park, this is a short distance from the park to the street, to Homer Street. Homer Street is an industrial zone, uh, there's a lot of delivery trucks that go down there to sell and so forth, some of this, so it's more or less a safety concern, and it was asked from even my constituents. The second request that I got was for a, in the front of the park on Buffalo Street, facing Buffalo Street, they were asking if they could just put a fence across, one-way fence across the park, they divided a little section there, and I asked them what they wanted it for, they said that they could use, they would really like to use it for their dogs, like him, the dog park. So, so all I'm asking for is two bids, one for a gate on Homer Street, and one to see how much a fence would cost if they enclosed that area for a dog park. And once we get bids, if it's reasonable, and you guys approve it in the budget, I'm not asking for anything tonight, put it through the budget process, I would appreciate it. Does that, do you, Tiffany, do you know, or John might know, can you take a section of that and even put it to a dog park? Cause that's, has something to do with the square footage of the park that was moved when MJ painting did an expansion, correct? So doesn't there have to be so much designated square footage for the actual park itself?
If it's used as a dog park, that, that constitutes green space, I mean, that's really what it, how is green space used, so aside for community.
So you could still use that, under that same square footage, you wouldn't reduce that, right?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so that's all I'm asking for, is if, I don't know who would get the bids for it, may I, but would you change or not what the asking for?
Yeah, we, we do, we'll get some.
Is that gonna be an automatic closing gate, cause no dog will ever leave that open? Just wondering, don't, we can't afford an automatic closing gate.
Um, I, so I'm just gonna be the one to be realistic and open and say, I don't think we should waste our time with a gate for the kids' park. And here, um, the chair for public safety, uh, I think we need to leave some responsibility to the parents to watch their children, especially in an area that size. If you can't catch your child, or, or, or watch your child, get off your phone, get off your chair, whatever. Um, there are other parks in this city that have just as much traffic, more than the amount of traffic that you get on that side street, and, uh, they're not fenced at all. So, I think that would just be a waste of city funds, as far as the flip side, a dog. Uh, I, I think that would be a good addition, because that, that was initially discussed, uh, but I think we could repurpose fencing. I know fencing was removed from Marcus Park, uh, I don't know where that is, maybe the city has some fencing that they could use. I don't know what the height requirement is, or what the other requirements are for a dog park, but we're looking at one span, uh, from, from that, uh, western side, western facing side of that park, uh, if there was something put, uh, north-south on that park, that would section off a large portion of that, that there.
It would also be, I think you'd have to bring that out and put that dead zone, like they have with the other one, where you go into the dead zone, shut the gate, unleash your dog, so you actually on the outside fence, cause you can't, you'd have to put, build that out.
Yeah, usually they build a box.
Yes, the double gated box.
Yeah.
So you beat me to it, um, I think of King Street Park, um, much busier, you know, there's traffic all the time, there is no fencing. Um, I, I'm not supportive of putting the fencing in, I would be supportive of, of putting it into a dog park, because I think that we've seen that it's, it's utilized. I do think that there's parental responsibility, um, but I just don't see the need for it, quite honestly, we, we do not, in our other parks, I mean, we have a parklet that, oh my god, is like right on top of the freaking road on Whitney, by the way, don't get me started on that one. Yeah, um, but I think of King Street, right, that is, is well-used, much more than, than the Homer Street, and I've gone to that park and talked to people there in the past and stuff, learned and trying to figure out stuff for parks, and I just don't see the, the investment in the safety issue there, as opposed to we would then, because quite honestly, thinking about precedents, right? And parents saying, well, now this is, you know, look, it's not safe, you guys did this, and how do we justify for a park, one park and not the other? John, this is Hendo, just.
Oh, John, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, um, now, I, I guess I, I would definitely agree with everybody, um, I think that, um, gates don't necessarily invite people to, to use it. I, I appreciate the safety precaution, I'd just like to see some kids using the park when I go by there, I, uh, appreciate the Nor, the Nor Dan people, uh, but I'd love to see, and I've said it for a long time, take that playground equipment, which is top-notch, and put that in Foreness Park, and let people use it. But, uh, I won't do that today, so, uh, with that being said, I do agree, I think that's been a day, idea day to, to put a dog park in there, that's a lot of empty space, uh, on that side of the park. So, um, I think, get some technical to install some fencing in that section with the entrance, uh, gate, for the, for the dogs to come in and out of with their owners. You can take your pup over there, you know, and, uh, hunt him around, but, uh, now as far as, uh, fencing in, I mean, it's already fairly fenced in, we were just talking about a small section, so.
Right, yeah, I'm going to, I'm not asking for anything tonight, I'm just following through with what my constituents, constituents have requested. Uh, so, so all I'm asking for is, I would be curious to see what a gate becomes myself, and it's like, I'm not asking for nay, or nay, or yea tonight. Just get the quote printed in the budget, if it's cheap, and you guys approve it, I'll take it myself.
I think you just want to buy six aldermen, if they want approval, so why do you have to price up the gate to six aldermen?
Because I'm an alderman, I've been here for seventeen years, JR, and I think I have the right to request a quote, okay?
And you know what, Dave, if, if, if I get you to vote yes for the budget, then put the damn gate in.
I guess I have a question too, I mean, if, if we're not looking to, to do it, you know, I, I think we've heard about the resources in DPW and, and time and what they need to do, and I don't think they should be chasing down a rabbit hole we're not going down.
It's alright, you better set it, just get the, get the quote, you know, who walks by the dollar sign, if you want, it's by the dollar.
Well, I mean, why, if the forum, we've had things that we don't agree on, you put the PL and you vote yea or nay. I mean, if that's, you know, if that's important to you, people don't agree, they can vote yes or no. Um, and the same with, you know, the dog park, you know, we can put yes or no, and, and put it in and you know?
Yeah, because we're a PL, and I just wanted to know what we did, but the price would be different.
But I don't, I don't think either should go in the budget if it's not approved, right, so I think we do have to go through that approval piece of it first, not that's.
Well, that sounds like the price is worse, as you.
Well, I'm saying prior.
When we would meet with committees, you take it out, you know, but it's.
I don't think that's how it works, um, I, I agree with you, Jen, that, that, then do it that way, put in a PL, if there's no second for it, if they voted down then, so be it. But we don't just put things in the budget hoping that they stick.
What's that? No, I was gonna say, any other questions, feedback, comments?
Sit back, I need some ice cream next time.
Okay, bring candy during the budget season, please. Um, okay, so, there are no committee reports, um, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. My mom wants to get that last one in, so.
Yes.